10698. I am Stephen Henley, the Chief of Judge for the United States Department of Labor, and I will be presiding over today's session, the purpose of which is to receive from interested parties oral testimony as well as other information pertinent to the proposed rule. After this hearing and post-hearing comment period have closed, OSHA will review the entire record in determining the content of the final rule. My role as Presiding Judge is limited to conducting this hearing to ensure that a complete and accurate record is made and that all interested parties receive a fair hearing and have the opportunity to submit their information. The hearing schedule and OSHA's procedures governing the hearing are available on the website These documents were sent to people and organizations who filed a timely notice of intention to appear at this hearing. A few words about the nature of the hearing. Despite the informal nature, it is governed by rules, both OSHA's rules governing hearings at 29 CFR Part 1911, and the hearing procedures issued specific to this rulemaking. These rules are meant to ensure that everyone has a fair opportunity to speak and express an opinion about the proposed rule. To that end, they also allow me to hold witnesses to their allotted times, limit undue repetition or excessive argument, and generally keep the hearing on schedule. Any written comments you have submitted to the docket are already part of the record of this rulemaking. In the rare case where witnesses wish to provide any other documents that have not already been entered in the docket, they should provide them by email to oshaevents_dsg@dol.gov before the witness begins their testimony so that they can be entered as exhibits in the record. Because all pre-submitted documents are already part of the record, your oral testimony should concentrate on presenting the highlights of your written comments or clarifying your written submissions. Hearing participants may also submit additional evidence or statements for a period of 90 days from the end of the hearing, which is September 30th, 2025. At that point, the record for this rulemaking will close. Today, after each speaker or panel of speakers completes giving oral testimony, OSHA and the Solicitor's Office will have an opportunity to ask questions of the speaker or panel. When OSHA and SOL have finished asking questions, there will be an opportunity, as time permits, for persons who filed a timely notice of intention to appear to question the witness or panel. Participants may only direct questions to witnesses with whom they have no organizational affiliation. This is the process I intend to follow. After OSHA has finished asking questions of a witness or panel, I'll ask the participants who wish to ask questions of the witness to identify themselves by raising the raise hand button in WebEx or pressing star three on their phones for those who have called in. Based on the hearing schedule and the number of participants who wish to ask questions, I will determine the order in which the participants will question the particular witness or panel and any time restrictions on that questioning. If we have more questions than time, it may be possible to ask additional questions after the conclusion of the final witness's testimony. Further, if witnesses are unable to answer a question during today's hearing or would like to expand on the answers provided, they are welcome to use the post-hearing comment period to submit such information. I would also like to remind you that this proceeding is being recorded and transcribed by a court reporter. To ensure that the reporter is able to provide an accurate record of all the testimony, questions, and responses, please try to remember to provide verbal responses to all questions. The court reporter may have a hard time seeing if you only nod or shake your head in response to a question. In addition, please remember to identify yourselves before beginning your testimony and before asking or answering a question. And don't worry, I know many participants aren't accustomed to doing these things. I will try and remind you as we go along. The transcript of the hearing will be uploaded to the hearing docket on regulations.gov approximately two weeks following the hearing. Now, unless we have any further announcements or housekeeping matters, I believe we can proceed with public testimony. I believe the speaking order will be displayed shortly. Here we go. The... When you are called on to testify, again, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Speak slowly and clearly so our court reporter can record these proceedings accurately. And our first panel is from the American Federation of Teachers, who will speak for 40 minutes. AFT.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you if you can identify yourself, sir.
Sir, thank you. My name is Dr. Frederick Cole, and I am Vice President of the American Federation of Teachers, Co-Chair of AFT's Climate Crisis Task Force, President of Local 2190, United University Professions, the union which represents over 40,000 faculty and professionals working in state universities.
Just maintaining a secure perimeter.
And Chair of the Board of Directors of the National Wildlife Federation. I appear before you today solely on behalf of the AFT and the 1.8 million members we represent to voice our strong support for the proposed OSHA heat rule. Our members include pre-K through 12th grade teachers, paraprofessionals, and other school-related personnel, higher education faculty and professional staff, federal, state, and local employees, nurses, physicians, and other healthcare professionals. In the case of UUP, that includes over 13,000 members engaged in patient care at SUNY's three public teaching hospitals across every state. Heat waves are occurring more often than they used to. They last longer and they are more intense. In July 2023, the Earth broke or tied its record for the hottest day on record four days in a row. Climate scientists have issued warnings for years about the disastrous consequences of climate change. We now expect that each summer will be, quote unquote, "the new record" for the hottest on record and can expect that many areas of the country will be regularly placed under excessive heat warnings, as has just occurred over the past week. According to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, the Earth's average land and ocean temperatures in 2024 were 2.32 degrees Fahrenheit above the 20th century average, the highest global temperature among all the years in NOAA's 1850 through 2024 climate record. Our planet's 10 warmest years since 1850 have all occurred in the past decade. Localized impacts are even more dramatic. Over the past 50 years, Austin, Texas, has seen the number of days with temperatures above the 100-degree mark increase by one month. While in Houston, over the same period, there's also been an increase of one month of days with temperatures over 95 degrees. As the number of days marked by excessive heat have increased, we've seen a rise in heat-related illnesses, emergency room visits, and deaths. Whether our members are teaching in front of a classroom of students, making road repairs, staffing a help desk in a state government office, maintaining our college campuses throughout the year, or attending to patients in busy emergency rooms, workplace exposure to excessive heat is a concern for every AFT member. I'm joined by colleagues today who represent the workers who serve in these different roles. They will describe the damage that extreme heat exposure does to our brains and our bodies. They will tell you that we are seeing an increase in heat illness and heat-related deaths on the job. They will explain how heat exposure drives up costs for employers due to missed workdays and increased healthcare utilization. What their testimony will make clear is that we need an OSHA heat standard that requires employers to take action to mitigate heat exposure and prevent heat-related illnesses. Over the course of these hearings, you have heard and will continue to hear from employers who will say that a heat standard is burdensome and difficult to implement. We take issue with that. There are so many ways for employers to intervene to ensure the safety and health of their employees. Whether it is by ensuring that staff stay hydrated by providing water and drink stations, educating staff to recognize the signs of heat exhaustion or illness, relaxing uniform requirements during the summer, providing paid rest breaks, providing access to air-conditioned indoor space, or ensuring access to shade outdoors, employers can and must take action to protect their employees. The fact is, we all have a moral obligation to do everything in our power to protect our workers. As the Earth's climate warms, heat waves will only increase in frequency and intensity. All workers, no matter where they work, should have legal protections to ensure their safety at work. With that, I hand things over to my colleague from AFT Connecticut, John Brady.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is John Brady. I am the Vice President of AFT Connecticut, representing 34,000 members in healthcare, public services, schools, and higher education. I worked in healthcare for 25 years, 16 as an emergency department nurse. ERs nationwide are the front line for heat-related illnesses as periods of extreme heat become hotter, longer, and more frequent. Today, I want to talk to you as a healthcare provider about the immediate and long-term impacts of heat exposure on human health and human and financial costs of preventable suffering. I will also share examples of how healthcare workers are at risk for heat-related illness in some settings. Data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics tells us that heat-related fatalities have been increasing every year, with 55 deaths attributed to heat stress in 2023. This was a 28% increase from 2022, when 43 workers died, and a 53% increase from 2021, when 36 workers died. BLS data also reveals that heat exposure caused nearly 33,000 serious lost-time illnesses between 1992 and 2020. 963 workers died during that period. These are illnesses and fatalities that have been directly attributed to heat. The short-term impacts of exposure are well-known. Heat exhaustion is serious. Heat stroke can result in organ failure and death without prompt treatment. Other acute impacts include dehydration, respiratory distress, cardiac dysfunction, hypertension, and heart rate disturbances. Heat increases fatigue and reduces cognitive function, impairing judgment or coordination, leading to injury in the workplace. Injuries can also be caused by hot tools, slippery sweat, or perspiration fogging up eye protection. The true toll of heat-related illnesses and fatalities is higher when we consider how heat exacerbates underlying health conditions and impacts chronic heat exposure over time. Heat is more dangerous to people with existing conditions such as cardiovascular disease, diabetes, obesity, and psychiatric conditions. Poor air quality during hot weather increases the stress on people with respiratory illnesses, including chronic or obstructive pulmonary disorder and asthma. Some medications, such as diuretics and stimulants, increase the risk of heat stress. Heat can cause complications during pregnancy and increases the risk of preeclampsia, premature death, and birth defects. People who work outdoor and in labor-intensive occupations suffer the long-term impacts of heat exposure, causing chronic illnesses such as kidney disease, cardiovascular problems, reproductive health issues, and neurological effects. Heat also increases the absorption of chemicals through increased respiration and blood flow, which can lead to higher toxicity over time. For indoor workers, long-term exposure to heat impacts respiratory health, diabetes, schizophrenia, and dementia. All of these result in additional healthcare expenditures and pressures on our healthcare system. Heat-related ER visits increased substantially across the US in the summer of 2023 compared with the same period from 2018 to 2022, according to a CDC study. A report examining all insurance claims in Virginia from 2016 to 2020 found 400 outpatient visits, nearly 7,000 ER visits, and nearly 2,000 hospital admissions attributable to direct or indirect heat-related illnesses. Researchers extrapolated those figures to all 50 states, estimating heat event days would be responsible for nearly 235,000 ER visits and more than 56,000 hospital admissions for direct and indirect heat-related illnesses, adding approximately $1 billion in healthcare costs annually. During heat waves, healthcare workers experience this additional pressure on the healthcare system, both in terms of more patients and patients who are sicker. Additionally, the stress that people experience during extreme heat increases the risk of workplace violence. Healthcare staff are also exposed to heat for extended periods in some situations. EMS workers provide care outdoors in homes and other locations, exposing them to a range of temperatures, including when they respond to fires. Home health nurses and aides also work in homes, including those without adequate cooling. Healthcare workers wear full PPE, including gowns, gloves, eye protection, and masks or respirators for extended periods in some settings, such as trauma units and isolation rooms. Room temperatures are raised to nearly 100 degrees in some burn units to prevent hypothermia for severely compromised burn patients. During the pandemic, many healthcare workers were deployed to conduct testing in parking lots in full PPE. This happens during significant disease outbreaks and chemical and radiation events. Increased stress, fatigue, and dehydration from heat can impair healthcare workers' cognitive ability and results in increased risk of medical errors. Most patient care spaces in hospitals are kept comfortable, but hospitals also have laundry rooms, kitchens, boiler rooms, parking garages, and other locations where temperatures may not be well-controlled. Just this week, in one of the hospitals where we represent the nurses in Norwich, Connecticut, the HVAC system failed. Temperatures quickly rose in patient care areas to near 100 degrees. As a unionized workplace, we were able to advocate for our members and to get the problem solved quickly, but that may not be the case in many hospitals across the country that are not unionized. Thank you. I look forward to any questions, and I'd like to hand off to my brother Eric.
Thank you, and good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Good morning, Judge Henley and other participants in the hearing. My name is Eric Berg. I'm a 25-year elementary school teacher, currently serving as President of the Boston Teachers Union. During my last 14 years in the classroom, I taught second grade on the south side of the third floor of a brick school building constructed in 1913. This is not unusual for Boston Public Schools, where the average age of schools is over 80 and only four new school buildings out of 123 have been constructed in the past 20 years. In Boston, we're in school through nearly the end of June. We were in school until Monday of this week, for instance. So on days when it was over 90 degrees outside, my classroom and the others on my floor were like a kiln, over 90 degrees inside. And I can recall many times on hot days, having two fans going in the classroom that I had brought in, so it was hard to hear anyone, but at least we had air moving, and my students just melting, you know, their hair plastered to their faces by sweat, sweltering and struggling to focus on anything, much less the end of the year testing by which our school was judged by the state. I have a photograph, if someone could put that on the screen, of one of my colleagues with her students. This was in late May of 2017 on a day in the 90s, just to get a sense of what it's like for seven hours in a classroom on the third floor of the Philbrick School and so many schools in Boston. It's just overwhelming, and I remember thinking at the time that folks who don't have to work in that kind of heat all day just can't really imagine what it's like. I don't know if that photo is able... I saw it briefly on the screen, but I don't know if it's able to be on. So my colleagues and I would go get popsicles at the supermarket, and while they were a hit for a few minutes for the kids, it just wasn't fair to those kids to expect them to learn in that heat, and it was not fair to us teachers, nor was it safe to expect us to work seven hours a day in that heat. Now, a few years ago, Boston Public Schools did install window air conditioners in most of our older schools. It requires keeping one or two windows permanently closed in most classrooms, but the relief provided by these window units makes all the difference on hot days. We still have 11 schools without any AC because we're told that those buildings require major electrical upgrades to power the window units, and those students and teachers continue to struggle with heat. Additionally, many of our schools with HVAC systems have issues on hot days, and those systems fail at alarming rates. As things get warmer in the summer in Boston, it is only that much worse. As I mentioned, Monday this week was the last day of school, and it reached 94 degrees in Boston. On that day, just after noon, according to the BPS Indoor Air Quality Dashboard, Room 315 at the Hennigan Elementary School was 88 degrees; multiple classrooms at the Murphy Elementary School were over 89 degrees; and Room 304 at the Mather Elementary School was 99 degrees in the classroom. And I have a screenshot of the indoor air quality measuring system. If somebody could put that also on the screen, that would be great. So Tuesday this week was 102 degrees in Boston. It was the fourth-highest temperature ever recorded in Boston, and luckily, the school year was over by then. But especially as our world warms, these days are going to become more frequent, and it's only fair that teachers and other workers, not to mention our students, are not subjected to debilitating heat in their classrooms. I've mentioned the indoor air quality sensor dashboard, and a few years ago, Boston Public Schools invested in this dashboard across nearly every classroom, nurse's office, and main office, and it's supported by rooftop outdoor air sensors. This initiative stands as a testament to the union-aligned value of safeguarding worker and student health through robust, data-driven systems. In our fight for safer schools, where every worker, educator, and student can thrive, we must treat indoor air as a fundamental right. And when we are monitoring and establishing rules for temperatures in workplaces, we should use the wet bulb globe temperature as the measurement, because that is what better indicates the expected heat stress on the human body. Effective indoor air quality monitoring ensures that environments intended for work do not become grounds for illness. But I would also add that monitoring only goes so far, because when classrooms and offices get overheated, as happened this week and the previous week, there needs to be some relief for workers in our K-12 schools. Now, Monday was a previously scheduled early release day, so we were able to advocate that in the schools without AC, teachers' professional development was moved to virtual so that teachers could be in an air-conditioned space. But on a regular school day, unlike in an office building, this type of accommodation is impossible in a school setting, and teachers and other school workers, along with students, are subjected to temperatures in the 90s for hours at a time and expected to teach and learn well in that environment. We know that high temperatures in work environments, including indoor work environments, increase the risk of workplace injuries due to reduced cognitive function and physical performance, which can have both immediate and lasting effects on workers' health and safety and reduces worker productivity. While OSHA doesn't directly cover the health and safety hazards facing K-12 students, much more research has been conducted on the effects of heat on children and learning outcomes than on the members we represent. But by extrapolation, we can state confidently that student learning conditions are educator working conditions, and similar manifestations of the effects of heat occur in adults as well. The studies that have looked at this issue have found that excessive classroom heat can significantly hinder students' ability to learn, concentrate, and engage in academic activities. High temperatures have been linked to decreased focus, impaired cognitive function, and increased fatigue, making it harder for students to retain information and participate effectively in lessons. Additionally, heat can lead to irritability, stress, and physical discomfort, further disrupting classroom dynamics and student performance. In extreme cases, prolonged exposure to high temperatures can contribute to absenteeism and reduce motivation, ultimately affecting overall academic success. There is no doubt that these same effects, magnified for older teachers and staff and for those with health issues, are felt by educators and other school workers in such hot classrooms and work environments. That's why, as a veteran teacher and as a union leader, I am here today to ask that public employees and indoor workers remain included in the proposed OSHA heat rules. In my own classroom experience and in the experience of the 8,500 active members of the Boston Teachers Union who work in hot schools year in and year out, the protections that would be afforded to workers, including teachers and other educators, by these regulations are critical to protecting their health and safety. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this important issue this morning, and now I'd like to hand it over to my colleague, Kenya Campbell, President of AFT Maryland. Thank you.
Kenya, before you start, this is Judge Henley. Mr. Berg, did you previously submit the photo and chart to the docket?
I believe that I did. I just want to make sure that they were submitted.
I'm getting a yes from SOL. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
It would appear Ms. Campbell is having some difficulty joining, which we are trying to work through.
Can we hear from Ms. Holland? Is she on? Can you promote her?
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Whitney Holland, and I am proud to represent AFT New Mexico. We are a union of educators, school staff, and higher education faculty across the state, from urban districts to the most rural school communities. Before I left the classroom to do full-time union work, I was an elementary teacher in a public school in New Mexico for 10 years. I remember the feeling of walking into my classroom in August and being hit with a wall of stagnant, suffocating heat. We'd open the doors and windows, run box fans, turn off the lights, but it barely made a difference. The students were hot, sluggish, and distracted. I was doing everything I could to keep them engaged, but I could barely focus myself. On the worst days, it didn't feel safe to teach, but we were still expected to carry on as if nothing was wrong. That experience stays with me. It wasn't just uncomfortable, it was dangerous. That's why I'm here today to speak in strong support of OSHA's proposed heat standard and to urge that it be made stronger, more comprehensive, and above all, inclusive of the realities our members face each day. In New Mexico, we live with extreme heat. From Las Cruces to Gallup, from Clovis to Espanola, we are seeing more and more days with temperatures climbing over 90 and even 100 degrees. This last summer, Albuquerque tied its all-time record for more days above 100. Triple-digit days have become routine in southern New Mexico, and yet, what's changed even more than the heat itself is our ability to respond to it. The systems we rely on, our school buildings, our buses, our ventilation infrastructure, weren't designed for this, and they're failing under the pressure. Most of our public schools were built decades ago. Many still lack air conditioning. Instead, we rely on outdated swamp coolers that can't keep up, especially during monsoon conditions. Classrooms have poor insulation, limited or no airflow, and some don't even have windows that can open. New Mexico educators regularly report that their classrooms exceed 85 degrees during the school day. That's not just uncomfortable, it's unsafe for both students and staff. One teacher told us her classroom hit 94 degrees during a September heat wave. Her students couldn't concentrate. One felt faint. She developed a migraine so severe she asked to leave early, but there was no cooling provided, no paid rest break, and no support offered. This wasn't a temporary fluke, it's a regular risk in New Mexico. Our school bus drivers often deal with even more extreme conditions. Their buses regularly have no air conditioning and very little ventilation. With the windows open and the top hatches unlatched, they do what they can, but it's still not enough. One driver told us she keeps a towel on the front seat to wipe the sweat off her hands so she can safely hold the steering wheel. Drivers report blurred vision, lightheadedness, and exhaustion while transporting dozens of students in 100-plus-degrees heat. Cafeteria workers, paraprofessionals on playground duty, custodians, maintenance workers, they all endure the same heat exposure, and many of them could fall outside the protections of this rule because their jobs are considered sedentary. That classification doesn't reflect the reality of their work. These workers are constantly on their feet, moving, lifting, monitoring, preparing food, cleaning, repairing. They do this in environments that often trap heat: small kitchen, unventilated workspaces, and even basements. This exemption must be removed. It excludes too many workers who are clearly at risk. We cannot create a standard that leaves out people very vulnerable to rising temperatures. I also want to emphasize that the burden is not equally distributed across our state. Rural and tribal schools in New Mexico face even greater challenges. In some areas, HVAC systems are literally patched together with duct tape, and when they break, which they often do, replacement parts can take weeks or even months to arrive. Infrastructure investment is low and the need is urgent. It's hard to follow a heat illness plan when the tools simply aren't there. That's why federal protections are so essential. They establish a floor that all employers must meet regardless of location or funding. We've seen tragic heat-related deaths among workers in New Mexico, especially those who labor outdoors. But the danger isn't limited to construction and agriculture. It extends to every corner of our public sector, including It extends to every corner of our public sector, including classrooms, kitchens, campuses, and buses. Heat doesn't discriminate by job title. That's why AFT New Mexico supports OSHA's proposal to require paid rest breaks, but we urge you to strengthen it. These breaks should begin at 80 degrees, not 90. The science and our experience tells us that heat illness often begins in the mid-80s, especially in poor-ventilated indoor spaces and for new or returning workers who haven't had time to acclimate. We also support the use of the wet bulb globe temperature instead of just the heat index. In New Mexico's high elevation, low humidity, and intense sun, the wet bulb globe temperature provides a much more accurate picture of how heat actually affects the human body. A dry 90-degree day in Albuquerque with full sun and no wind can be just as dangerous as a humid day elsewhere. We need a measurement standard that reflects our reality. Another important aspect of this rule is the inclusion of workers and where applicable, the unions in the creation and implementation of the heat illness protection prevention plan. This is a crucial piece. In districts where administrators and local unions work together, we've seen how it can make a difference: implementing training, adjusting schedules to avoid peak heat hours, and ensuring hydration stations are available and used. This kind of collaboration shouldn't depend on local goodwill, it should be required. Workers are the ones experiencing the risk firsthand, they must have a voice in how to mitigate it. Their inclusion strengthens both compliance and outcomes. Right now, only a handful of states in the country have heat protections. New Mexico is not yet one of them. That means the vast majority of our educators, staff, and public workers are counting on you. Safety shouldn't depend on what zip code you work in or how generous your employer happens to be. Let's be clear, this isn't a surprise hazard. Heat is predictable, it's preventable, and it's getting worse. OSHA's final role must treat it with the same seriousness we apply to other workplace hazards because it is one. We need a strong, enforceable standard that protects all workers. That includes teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, educational support staff who keep New Mexico's public institutions running. They show up every day, no matter the temperature, and they deserve to do their job in safe conditions. I think it's crystal clear in our testimony today that AFT and its affiliates are committed to making sure our classrooms are safe for educators and students. What we want to ensure is that the standard's in place so there is no interruptions to our learning, so educators can focus on teaching and students can focus on learning. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak and for your commitment to protecting America's workers.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. I think we have Ms. Campbell. Ms. Campbell?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good morning. I'm Kenya Campbell, President of AFT Maryland. AFT Maryland represents school district employees, healthcare workers, doctors, as well as public employees providing a range of services for cities, counties, and states. Today, I will highlight the challenges of city and state public employees, as my fellow panelists have, and will address facing concerns facing other constituencies. As a Federation of Unions, we represent state, county, and city employees across the state of Maryland. Many of these public employees are required to work outdoors, including state park rangers, parking enforcement officers, and Baltimore City Maintenance crews, among others. Our members are increasingly faced with challenging working conditions due to dangerously high temperatures during the summer months. These dedicated public servants are on the front lines ensuring essential services are delivered in spite of the extreme heat. Today, I will highlight the work we've done with MoSh and the lessons we've learned from that experience, because we believe it can help to inform the work for a federal standard. AFT Maryland has been actively engaged with the Maryland Department of Labor, the Maryland Occupational Safety and Health MoSh Division, the state legislature, and city government to address this critical issue. I am pleased to report that MoSh finalized new heat illness prevention rules, with implementation beginning this summer. These new regulations are a direct and necessary response to the rising temperatures we are experiencing due to climate change. This urgent action was in part a response to a tragic event that showed the severe risks associated with heat exposure on the job. On August 2, 2024, Ronald Silver, a 36-year-old Baltimore sanitation worker, died of heat exhaustion while on the job. His death prompted an immediate and thorough investigation into working conditions within the Baltimore Department of Public Works. A report on Mr. Silver's death by the city's Inspector General listed failures to ensure a safe work environment, including the lack of cold water and limited access to cooling facilities. MoSh cited DPW for these violations. In response to the awareness of these critical needs, the MoSh heat stress standards went into effect on September 30, 2024. These comprehensive standards apply to both indoor and outdoor workplaces where employees' exposure to a heat index is at or above 80 degrees Fahrenheit for more than 15 consecutive minutes per hour. Some of the key requirements and provisions of these new MoSh heat stress standards include: Employers are now mandated to develop, implement, and maintain a heat-related illness prevention plan that is accessible to employees and MoSh. This plan must address how sufficient drinking water will be provided, how to recognize and respond to heat-related illness symptoms, how rest break schedules will be implemented based on environmental conditions, workload, PPE, and emergency response procedures. Furthermore, it requires training for employees on heat hazards and prevention. It also asks employers that they must monitor the heat index at work sites using reliable methods, including direct measurement and local weather data from recognized sources like the National Weather Service. Employers must also provide shaded areas as close to the work area as practical. If shade is not feasible or unsafe, alternative cooling and control measures must be implemented. Employers must provide at least 32 ounces of cool drinking water per hour per employee at no cost, and as close to the work areas as possible. When the heat index reaches or exceeds 90 degrees Fahrenheit, specific procedures are triggered. This includes a minimum rest period of 10 minutes for every two hours worked when the heat index is between 90 degrees Fahrenheit and 100 degrees Fahrenheit, and a minimum rest period of 15 minutes for every hour worked when the heat index is above 100 degrees. Training also on heat-related illness prevention must be provided initially, annually, and immediately following any suspected or confirmed heat-related illness incident. Training records must be maintained for one year. While Mr. Silver's death opened the doors to new standards, his death was definitely a tragedy that was preventable. And keep in mind, we still have members who remain at risk every single day. Members of AFT Maryland's unions are professional employees who are often out in job settings where extreme heat can be a daily work hazard. These are workers who service the state of Maryland, who make Maryland work. My members are, for example, lead abatement specialists, professionals and scientists who work for the Department of Environment, who travel to sites where evidence of elevated lead levels had been found. Often, they must assess properties that are outdoors and indoors with poor ventilation. My members are also park rangers, professionals who who are working for the Department of Natural Resources at our state parks, making sure visitors are safe and rules and regulations are followed. My members are also registered nurses and other health professionals working in healthcare facilities that often may be dated, poorly ventilated, with minimal to no, no air conditioning. We also have water meter readers, technicians, and repairmen, specialists who work for municipal or county public works to read water meters for residents, often involved in outdoor work in confined spaces depending on the size of the meter. Workers have reported being in these spaces for long periods of time without shade, water, or frequent breaks. This issue was very personal to me, because for more than a decade as a classroom teacher with respiratory issues, asthma, it was challenging to combat my own health issues and be there for my students who were attempting to learn while facing uncomfortable classroom conditions. I witnessed firsthand the incidents extreme heat conditions caused. I've had multiple students with frequent nosebleeds, six students and colleagues who were transported to the ER for various heat exhaustion symptoms. My school building was dated with poor ventilation due to inaccessible windows or windows that could not be opened. There was also the expectation of returning to the school building the next day after an extreme heat, with the previous day's cycling temperatures still in the building combined with current temperatures. I could go on and on with examples of how my members are at risk while on the job. While Maryland has a standard, we need a national standard, because all workers deserve the protections we were able to enact in our state. These fights should not have to be fought tirelessly on the state level when a comprehensive national standard could do so much more. There are literally millions of public employees who do the same jobs as our members, but do not have any protection. For these reasons, AFT Maryland believes the new heat stress standards are a vital step towards safeguarding the health and lives of all workers. These regulations will significantly lower the risk of the heat-related illnesses and fatalities, allowing employees to perform their essential duties safely. We urge OSHA to consider the comprehensive nature of these regulations as a model for federal action, as the threat of heat-related illness is a national concern that demands a nationwide response. Thank you for your time. I'll now hand it over back to Fred.
Thank you very much, Kenya. And thank you again, Judge Henley, and to all from the Department of Labor and OSHA who are on this hearing. It is vitally important for all of us to be aware that we are facing, and we must acknowledge, a situation of of heat-related injuries rising both in terms of prevalence and scope. The deaths that are occurring and will continue to occur to a large extent due to the climate crisis that we're facing. The health impact of rising temperatures will be broad for everyone, but especially harsh for those who have pre-existing medical conditions, pregnant workers, and the elderly. I can attest to personally, coming from public higher education, that due to longstanding disinvestment in public higher education institutions, what we are seeing are buildings and facilities that are not air-conditioned, that are not safe to work in. As I started with earlier, in higher education, we have members of AFT and UUP who are working year-round in diverse settings, in residential halls, dormitories, which are not air-conditioned. Also, in diverse campuses, like my home campus, we have a farm, and on that farm, we have livestock who are subject to the same dangers of high temperatures, but at the same time, the staff who work at that farm have to deal with the intense heat brought on by the climate crisis. And so we are dealing with such a diversity of membership in AFT, and that is why, as you have heard, this issue is so vitally important to us. We believe, as a union, that workplace safety is foundational to any meaningful economic opportunity. Without the legal protections needed to ensure workers are safe on the job and can return to their families after a day of work, little else is secure. In conclusion, we'd like to thank OSHA for this opportunity to provide testimony on the need for a strong standard on extreme heat to protect both indoor and outdoor workers. We believe all workers deserve protection from excessive heat. As you can see from the testimony, our panel of AFT leaders provided today, occupational exposure to heat does not discriminate. All workers face both immediate and long-term health risks from heat exposure on the job. We urge OSHA to prioritize implementing a federal, heat-specific workplace standard that articulates employers' obligations for protecting workers and finalize it without delay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have questions from OSHA for this panel?
We do, Your Honor. This is Zoe Petropolis with the Director of Standards and Guidance. First off, I want to thank the AFT panel for your testimony. We'll have a few questions for you, and I'll start. So we've received comments noting that employees are currently working in schools with inadequate climate control and suggested that these employees should be covered by the proposed standard, and we also heard that in your testimony. And we're wondering if you could elaborate on the experiences of your members in working in such school buildings? What are typical temperatures? How often are members exposed to conditions above the initial and high heat triggers? How often are these members provided with alternative options such as working virtually? And how often are school days start and